Doug, what time is it?
Time to start.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for being here. This today is Tuesday, March 8, 2022. This is a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Due to issues arising from COVID-19, the board is using continues to use WebEx. And so whether you're joining us on the web or by teleconference, we thank you for your participation. For those interested in making unscheduled appearances, there are the ability to fill out a speaker's card. And those online, please raise your hand or use some other means to get our attention. We will take up those speakers on the WebEx in the in the order that we have them. So thank you very much for that. And you'll see a little bit difference in the board chambers this morning. We have removed some of the barriers and and moved around some staff. But each vote today will continue to be verbal and voice vote so that members of the public can hear how each member has voted. So.
Can I get plastic up over here?
You can. Yeah. We will do whatever you want.
We need some boxing ropes, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Some ring ropes.
Day. Never can make some people happy. Well, thank you very much, anyone anyway, for being here. In a in order to establish quorum, we'll now ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboen.
Here.
Craig Peterson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here. Let the record show all members present, we have established quorum. We will be able to conduct business today. So thank you, everyone, for being here. And now, if I can ask everyone to please rise as we invite Dr. Lisa Lewis, the Director of Bayberry Hall, to deliver the invocation, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good morning, Dr. Lewis.
Good morning. Let us pray. God of love, God of light, turn your face to us because our hearts are heavy with the darkness of an unimaginable war that's raging now. God who watches over us and whose gaze we take refuge and shelter shelter us today. Help us find a calm kind of standing. When our faith falters, give us the courage to go on boldly with hope and confidence. For you are the one whose watchfulness is steady. We pray for the nation of Ukraine today. We pray for those fleeing their homes. Please grant safety and safe harbor to the people. Comfort the children and the elders. Strengthen those who must make unimaginable choices and grant them peace. For those men and women who are fighting for their country today, give them courage and grant them peace. God of love renewing us a hope for the future. In our broken hearts, remind us that in brokenness, we can find greater capacity for more kindness, more compassion, and more wisdom. Please give us wisdom and grant us peace today for our community and for the world. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Now, please join me as we honor America by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible. Thank you very much, everyone. The next item on the agenda is unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the public. Speakers will be limited to two minutes. We're going to begin unscheduled with some introductions. Rosemary, would you like to introduce a very special individual?
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman, Supervisors. Rosemary Rand, Public Health. It is my pleasure to introduce Everardo Lalo Legospi, the new Assistant Director at the Kings County Department of Public Health. Effective yesterday. Lalo has been a program manager in the department since December 2019. And before coming to Kings County, he was a grants manager at a nonprofit, providing various social services programs primarily focusing on survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking. And prior to that, he was a legal advocate for domestic violence survivors for over eight years. Lalo holds a bachelor's degree in political science from UC Berkeley and a master's in public administration from Fresno State. He's excited to take on a leadership role, working to improve the lives of Kings County residents and their health. Please join me in welcoming Lalo.
Good morning. Thank you for being here. If you want to say anything, we'll give you two minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Good, thank you. Mr. Hill, you also have introduction this morning?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to introduce your board to Christine Olivera, the new Secretary to the CAO. Christine Olivera was raised in Kings County and graduated from the College of Sequoias with an associate's degree in paralegal studies. She worked for the city of Lemoore in the finance department and then as a senior paralegal for a local Kings County law firm for 15 years. She also lived abroad in Italy for five years where she taught English as a foreign language in schools. We're very happy to have her here and fill that seat and yet another person to keep me on track.
Welcome. Good morning. Thank you for being here. You got two minutes?
I'll take 10 seconds. Thank you for having me. It's a wonderful opportunity and I'm glad to be home in the county of Kings and glad to be a part of the team.
Well, we look forward to working with you.
Welcome. If you have any good chicken recipes from Italy, I want them. And your top three wine bottles, I want those too.
Those for you, definitely.
Good, thank you.
Very nice to meet you all.
Good luck. And now, remaining on unscheduled, does a clerk have a record of anyone that would like to address the board at this time?
The first speaker is Chris Gutierrez.
Good morning, Chris. Please state your name and address for the record, then continue with your remarks.
Good morning. My name is Chris Gutierrez. I'm the Vice President of Kings County Local 3747. I live out in 896 Willwood Court in Hanford, California. And I'd just like to say it's awesome to see you guys sitting there now with nothing protecting, but no more screens. It's awesome to see you there. But wanted to give you guys an update on what your Kings County firefighters have been up to. I know it's been a while due to all the craziness going on in today's world. But your Kings County firefighters still like to maintain that we are in some ways a way of hope for the community. During the past couple of weeks, we've been out giving out cold weather gear to a lot of the field workers out at Burris Parks area. So Wal One's area, we've been passing stuff out, handing out cold weather jackets, gloves, socks, beanies, blankets. Out to a lot of the workers out there, you know, it's really cold temperatures. So we wanted to help them out. And each year, we're going to continuously do that. We've also went ahead and partnered with the Refuge House coming up for this Easter to do an Easter egg hunt for our Mona. So please be lookout for that. Going to have a it's going to be an event with the entire Kings County's bottom to 10. And if you guys would like to come out and look for some of our Easter eggs too, please, please do. We're just excited for it. So we're hoping we can see you guys out there and hoping the public will go out there too and find some Easter eggs by this time. That's it.
Good, thank you, Crystal.
The next speaker is Rebecca McGee.
Good morning, Rebecca. Thank you for being here. Please state your name for the record and then continue with your remarks.
I live at 19th Avenue in Lemoore, and I'm an in-home health service worker currently. Come to say that we would appreciate the consideration to have an increase in wages. We would prefer to have it at least 60% so that we can be at competing wages with our accompanying counties because we feel that we do an entirely same job. And in fairness, we, as Kings County, you may only see a few of us, but there are a lot of us that are not able to be here because we're taking care of our clients. It's a very necessary. It is a very important job. It is comparable to not only a nurse. It is also comparable to a housekeeper and to a garbage man and to other combined. Ours is not a conventional job. It is very unconventional. A lot of times, we work unconventional hours. I know you can all relate. And we struggle hard to keep our daily lives invested in our clients and invested in the health of others. And we've tried to make this community safe for not only the pandemic, but for our clients who are, you know, some of them are compromised by the situation. And like I said, we are just asking for competable wages with other individuals that do the exact same job in their county. Our county is not depleted in resources for our wages, in our opinion. And I know our opinions don't matter for much, but our actions do. And we make very good decisions on a daily basis for our clients and for our entire county. And we would appreciate the considerations due to the fact that we do our job diligently. And we would appreciate, like I said, just to be considered. We have very little dignity sometimes in the things that we provide for our clients, but it would make our heads a little higher. I personally, this would only be a $60 increase for my month. But the dignity, my head would be a little higher in the stores, knowing that I am at least making compatible wages to others. And they've come to support us as well. I appreciate your time, and I would just like to ask, Mr. Verboen, you know, why can't our county let us raise our heads as high as Fresno and Tulare? Thank you for your.
Thank you. And we do have the the clock on. So when you see the yellow folder come up, that means you have 30 seconds left. And then the red one means you've expired your two minutes. So thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
Jonathan Olivera.
Good morning, Jonathan. Thank you for being here. Please state your name for the record and then continue with your remarks.
My name is Jonathan Olivera. I've been a IHSS worker for on and off for 20 years now. I would really appreciate if we could get a raise because I think we do deserve it. Me, myself, I take care of my mother. And she needs 24/7 care. It's very hard. It's very stressful. And as of right now, we're only making minimum wage. We have no insurance. I have 5,000 plus in medical bills right now that I have to pay on myself. It would be nice to have insurance. I know that we're not fighting for that right now, but at least a wage increase would help us and be able to pay our bills. You know, everything's going up, but our wages aren't. That's all I have to say right now.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Olivera.
The next speaker is Norberto Gonzalez.
Good morning. Thank you for being here. State your name for the record and then.
Of course, I will, Mr. Nevs.
Good, thank you.
Good morning to you all. My name is Norberto Gonzalez. I am the Executive Director of Voter PAC, an organization that does voter registration and voter engagement up and down the valley. I do live here in Hanford. I won't state my address publicly, but you do have it on file. I'm here to stand with SEIU 2015 and their struggle to increase their wages. I was an IHSS worker when I first started. I took care of my grandmother, my dad, my uncle through some really difficult times. The stories these people tell are not just stories of themselves. These are the lives that they live every single day, and they deserve a fair wage. They deserve comparable comparable wages to counties nearby, and they do deserve an increase. I will yield back the rest of my time to them as it is their story that I want you to hear today.
Good, thank you. Thank you for being here.
The next speaker is Dylan Vest.
Good morning. Thank you for being here. Please state your name for the ad and for the record and then continue.
My name is Dylan Vest. I am the Treasurer for the Kings County Firefighters Association. My president, Jason Mustang, couldn't be here today, so I just came to speak. I have to apologize first. I've been to many board meetings, first time speaking, and I'm a young man, full of youth, and I don't have the vernacular or maybe the speaking skills to speak on such an important subject for us. So please bear with me. Many of you guys are already aware of our cause and the initiative put forth by the citizens of this county to keep its firefighters safe. Due to nobody's fault, we have lost 97% of our volunteer firefighters here in Kings County. When I started five years ago, we had 10 to 20 volunteers at each station. Now we are down to only three volunteers, and two of them are becoming full timers with us currently in the process. Our engines, many of our engines are lacking the modern features that would keep our lives safe to come home to our families. Our staffing and infrastructure has reached critical levels, leaving most engines staffed with only two firefighters, half of the standard set by the NFPA to operate safely. Thankfully, thousands of registered citizens have rallied to our cause from all communities of the county. We asked that the Board of Supervisors rally to our cause as well. We still have hope and believe in the democratic process. It is this process that makes us as Americans different from the rest of the free world. I am proud to be a part of this journey as this citizens initiative reflects the purest form of democracy. If anyone, any of our leaders or any of you guys or anybody in this room supports our cause, the Kings County firefighters, our wives, friends, families, and the thousands of taxpaying supporters that signed our petitions, they will know about it, they will hear about it, and they will remember. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Thank you. Good job.
The next speaker is Wendy Newberry.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. My name is Wendy Newberry. I live at 2035 North Borough Drive here in Hanford, California. I'm here today to see if we can get a higher wage. A lot of us have families. A lot of things have gone up. Gas has gone up, food has gone up, pretty much everything's gone up. And some of us have children. I have a three-year-old and a six-year-old. And getting a higher wage would definitely help my family get more food on the table. Do what we need to do to survive. But it's also, you know, our clients. A lot of us use our cars to get where we need to go to in front. We have to put maintenance in our cars to get to our clients so we can help them go shopping for them, take them where they need to go. It's very important for us as a community to pull together and so that we can do what we need to do by getting a higher wage for us all to survive. Really appreciate you guys' time and hopefully you guys consider it. Thank you very much.
Good, thank you for being here.
I believe that's all the speaker cards that we do have, and I don't see anyone online.
No one online? No one with their hand raised? Last call, is there anyone that would like to address the board under unscheduled? Hearing or seeing no one come forward?
Can I just ask a question, Accounting Council? I know that these folks have been here for, gosh, better part of eight, nine, 10, 11 months. Are we in active negotiations?
We just began to active negotiations, it's my understanding, approximately two weeks ago. So I know that these folks have been coming and petitioning the board for a considerable time, but until just recently, there was no actual and active request for negotiations. Since that request, we have begun negotiations.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Last call. Again, thank you, everyone. Oh, you want to, yeah, go ahead. Please state your name and address for the record and then continue.
My name is Ulises Castellanos. I'm here from Vicelia. I'm here to support IHSS providers in Kings County. I also want to share something that our members have been telling me. They feel that they're not being respected by Kings County. I'm just going to be completely honest. A member yesterday came up to me and showed me the wage increases that the Board of Supervisors received. They know that we've been negotiating our contracts since 2017. Now, Mr. Peterson mentioned right now it's been a long time. And they told me, I thought Kings County was in a deficit. I thought Kings County was broke. How come they're giving themselves a wage increase set? They were just offering us 10 cents in 2017. How come they got a $1,000 wage increase every month? And we're just getting 10 cents? So I just want to share that with you all, okay?
Thank you. So I just want to be clear that they were not at the table any time before the 15th.
It's my understanding that that there were negotiations that began a number of years ago, but they were discontinued or they they dissolved for whatever reasons. And I'm assuming it was COVID-19. But there was recently, on February 15th, a request to negotiate, and the county has begun negotiating with SEIU since that time. But until February 15th, there were no ongoing negotiations.
And I don't, I don't say that to disrespect anyone here, but without being at the table, it's very difficult to have that discussion. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. I noticed Sonia has hand raised. Do we have for available? Sonia?
Good morning, our members. Sonia Gay, Human Services Agency Director and your Public Authority Executive Director. I just wanted to confirm that, yes, we are actively negotiating, and we have a Public Authority Board meeting scheduled for March 22nd where your board will get a more detailed update. Our MOU has expired, and it was expired since 2016. And we have been on and off at the table for various reasons for a number of years, but more recently, a lot more active since beginning of February.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll bring unscheduled appearances to a close and move on to the next item, which, Mr. Hill, would you like to report out on the closed session that was held March 1st?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your board took no reportable action at the March 1st meeting.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Hill. We'll move on to the next item, and that's a discussion on the minutes of that meeting of March 1st. Have members had an opportunity to review those minutes?
I'll move as presented.
Second? Moved by Doug, seconded by Craig. Any other discussion? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show the minutes stand approved, five in favor. Thank you very much. Moving to the consent calendar, we do have the the one item. Is there any consideration about the amended consent calendar as as it was? If there's any clarifications?
If there's no further clarifications or amendments, then I would move the consent calendar as.
Moved by Peterson, seconded by Verboen. Any other discussion on the consent calendar? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs. Richard Valley. Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show the amended agenda has consent calendar has been approved unanimously by members present. Thank you very much. Moving to regular agenda items. First item comes from elections. Lupi, good morning, sir. It's nice to see you in 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 person.
Person.
Yeah, white shirt on and everything. You're looking sharp today.
Sir, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Luke Pavia with the Elections Office. Hope you guys have a good morning. Before you have two items today, first item is going to be related to the grand jury investigation that was conducted against the, oh, not against, but with the Elections Office. On October 21st, I met with the 2021, 2022 Grand Jury Regarding Elections Department. Based on that meeting, the grand jury, the grand jury prepared and delivered an investigative report to my office on January 21st, 2022. The report indicated five findings and five recommendations, and I have a response for each one of those findings and recommendations. The first finding is in regards to establishing credibility within that department by writing policy and procedures. That came about due to the the interview that I had with the grand jury, and their concern was lack of policies and procedures. The Elections Department is responsible to submit on an annual basis before any election to the Secretary of State policies that govern how we manage the election to include the campus period. So we do update those policies as we move through each election. For the last year and a half, each election's been a different type of election for various reasons. The pandemic was one of them. So we are working and we do work constantly throughout the year to update our policies. And we do have policies in place that cover the requirements set by the Secretary of State. The second finding is the vacancy within the department. That again was part of the discussion. That vacancy is being filled. February 7th was start date for that staff member. So we're fully staffed. There's five plus myself. There were six total in the department. Third recommendation or finding is penetration testing, and they recommend that we do that more frequently. A penetration test is basically it's the Information Technology Department, the IT Department contracted out Novocoast, which is a vendor, to come into the county and conduct the test. That test was conducted prior to the 2020 general election at my request, simply to ensure that our systems were not vulnerable. If there's any type of deficiencies, we can identify and take action, try to make those corrections. We are not required by state to conduct penetration tests. There was funding available to me of $25,000 through a cybersecurity grant that I took advantage of, and I contacted John Devlin at the IT Department, and together we worked it out, and there was the test conducted throughout the county. So the results of those tests gave us indicators of what we should be covering and what we should be protecting. Those steps I've taken have been taken already, and we're in a much better position today. The grand jury was recommending that we do those most frequently. They're expensive, but even given the expense attached to the penetration test, we're continuing to to search for funding to try to conduct this test at least every other year during the presidential or gubernatorial elections. The fourth finding, it's in regards to verification of signatures as we process ballots. The grand jury recommended that we use American Recovery Act funds, ARPA funds, to purchase equipment that would identify or verify our signatures in the department. Although I support that type of technology, I think that what we have in place today works well. We verify signatures. It's human eyes and human hands that grab each one of those envelopes and compare to the images that we have captured from each voter to ensure that they match. So even though the technology is there, I feel that we are capable of performing the verification ourselves. So even though we'll all continue to search and try to identify the equipment that can help us stamp the envelopes and open the envelopes for us. But in regards to verifying the signatures, I think we're a safer place by doing it with human and not by equipment or machines. And the last finding, it's only they're saying that it's only 50% of registered voters voted in the last election. And their recommendation is to conduct additional community outreach. As you guys know, not long ago, I came before more bias in my camp, and I requested that we implement VCA Border Show Act, which we are going to deploy for the June 7, 2022 primary. The VCA is has a requirement in which we have to do extensive and aggressive outreach to the community, not only to promote the VCA model, but to encourage voters to come out and vote. So our numbers have gotten up. Unfortunately, we there's there's so much you can do. It's up to the voter to come out and actually participate on Election Day or early voting. So we're doing everything we can within our department to ensure that voters come out and participate. Our numbers have increased in the last two elections, including the gubernatorial election. The 2020 general election was record breaking. We had over 44,000 people come out and vote, and that's that's pretty good numbers to have in Kings County. So we are working extensively to try to improve those numbers. In the report itself, there was noted inaccuracies. And I'll share with you guys what I found in the in that report. After reviewing the report, the Elections Department, the in the grand jury report dated December 9th, an inaccurate statement was found in the third paragraph under the background. The report states, "An additional piece of equipment which helps verify signatures, take stamp, and open envelope is located..." is located within the Elections Office." That is inaccurate. We have a piece of equipment that opens the envelopes. We manually stamp each envelope as we get them. So that is an inaccurate statement. I just want to make that correction for the record. The second one was, uh, there's a discussion of um, the last sentence on the discussion, it says, "The process of," I'm sorry, let me go back. The, the, they were requesting a forensic audit, or they wanted to talk about forensic audit. And my response to them was that if we conduct a forensic audit in any of our equipment, is going to decertify the equipment. They noted that it would decertify the election. It does not decertify the election. It's first, it certifies equipment, not the election. So, and that was in regards to their request for a forensic audit. And with that said, that is the findings, my response to those findings. And I respectfully meant that the board uh, approves the response to the grand jury.
Thank you, Mr. Villa. Questions or comments?
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Villa, uh, first I want to say thank you for uh, for responding to this and the work you did on that. I just want to thank the grand jury. I know that, you know, it's, it's takes time for people like them to step away from their families and their individual responsibilities to serve as, as public service, and I appreciate that. So that being said, in reading, in reading this report, I wa, I wasn't happy with it from just the tone of the report. It's my own, only my personal opinion here that uh, part of this report coming out, I didn't hear any complaints from the public about Department of Elections. I ain't heard um, any strong um, accusations or allegations to wrongdoing in the Department of Elections. And so I don't want the public to take this report or the approval of the Board of Supervisors' response is lending some kind of weight to um, this uh, image that there was something going on in there. So even starting with the first um, finding, you know, they keep using words like, "There's an urgent need to help establish credibility for the Elections Department." That right there, the credibility was established the day the Board of Supervisors appointed Mr. Villa to the department head as, as for the Kings County Department of Elections. And you and your staffs have done uh, an outstanding job. All right, and I'm going to say that publicly. You did an outstanding job, not only from the day you took um, uh, the reins in there, but through the challenges that you and your staff faced. The pandemic, for one thing, um, changes in voting laws. And I think um, even coming out of that, I mean, it's fair to say that you and your staff were on the front lines of the pandemic because elections took place. After that, I saw your staff, I know they're talking about vacancies, but I saw your staff out there working um, COVID mobile testing units, COVID uh, drive-throughs. Um, I know that because they were there by my side when I was volunteering, working them as well, right when the vaccines hit. And I know for a fact, without putting anyone's health information out there, that some of your staff got sick, got COVID by volunteering at these sites and being around and out in public as much, the exposure that they got. So, so I appreciate you on that. As far as um, voter turnout, I know that there's probably an argument that Department of Elections plays a role in that, but only so far. Voter turnout to me, that, that's a responsibility of candidate. So if you don't have any energy in your campaign, or you're not a quality candidate, you're not out there um, uh, working your campaign hard uh, every day to the late night, like the way you're supposed to do it, then the outreach, the turnout on Election Day is not going to be there. So I don't like seeing that as a fault to you and your staff because there's a lot of other factors that, that play a role in that. You know, for turnout, turnout goes um, both ways. You know, the sitting grand jury is, again, I respect them, but there's not one person from my district sitting on the grand jury today. So where's the community outreach there around the county? You know, there should be somebody from Corcoran, there should be somebody from Avonale out there. There's not one person on the grand jury that represents the district that I represent. So again, that being said, Mr. Chair, I don't have any problems with the response. I appreciate the inaccuracies that Mr. Villa put out. I'm like, again, want to close with thanking him and his staff. And uh, just uh, again, there's nothing wrong to begin with here, but the work is appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is that a motion?
Um, I can make it one. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I could too, I'd just like to add, Mr. Chairman, I, I truly appreciate Mr. Villa's efforts. And uh, you know, I think it's, it's what I hear in the community. And you know, I mean, when he first came into office, everyone was like, okay, who is this guy? What the, how's he going to run the office? Um, and uh, you know, his efforts to get out into the community and, and present himself and his office and uh, the operation in a, in a professional manner. And, and uh, I mean, that's, that's truly, you know, it's just critical, right? Because, you know, our, our greatest right in this country is to vote. And um, we put that on your shoulders and, and you've um, you know, done well in representing your office and uh, uh, making sure that folks know that you are approachable and, and if they have questions, to contact you and you'll answer them. And you've done that every step of the way. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Good, thank you. Any other question or comments?
I just want to clarify the motion. Um, if, the way I understand it, the motion is to approve the Kings County Elections Department response to the Kings County Grand Jury Report dated December 9th, 2021.
That's my heard. Yes, thank you, Counsel. That item's been moved by Valley, seconded by Verboon. Additional clarification? Here, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. Let the record show that item stands approved, five in favor. Mr. Villa, would you like to continue with uh, the next item on the agenda regarding a resolution for the election?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Um, thanks so much for the comments made previously. So I appreciate them. The, this item is, it's going to be a little bit more confusing item. So I did write out a report. I'm going to read out the report, which is normally not what I enjoy doing, but I would like to make it clear to the public and to the board how this process works. And I also want to thank the Firefighters Association for showing up today and, and supporting this item as well. So um, in November of 2021, members of the Kings County Firefighters Association shared their interest in initiating a ballot tax measure that would benefit the Kings County Fire Department. The Elections Department provided the Kings County Firefighters Association with the initiative process, along with the guide on how to process this initiative or go about this initiative. During that meeting that I had with them, I explained to them the time limits, and it was, it was a rough, very compressed calendar to be able to pull this off. They, they took the information back. Um, I told them, you know, the election was June 7th, 2022. So we needed to act on this and act swiftly and, and, and quick. On January 7th, 2022, they returned back to my office. They submitted their notice of intention to circulate the petition proposing a half percent sales tax increase through a special tax use that would solely benefit the Kings County Fire Department. On January 10th, the Kings County Firefighters Association provided the Elections Department the final version of the Kings County, Kings County Fire and Emergency Services Ordinance, which was required. The Kings County Fire and Emergency Services Ordinance was provided to County Council. County Council then had the duty to create what is called a title and summary. That title and summary, along with the notice of intent, were publicated or published in the half percent as required by law. So those, those requirements were met. The ballot entitled, the ballot entitled in summary was provided to the association on January 28th. They used that, the ti, the title and summary to create a petition. If you guys have ever signed a petition outside of Walmart, wherever you're at, they have to include what the ballot or what the measure is about on that petition itself. The title summary that was created by County Council was put on that petition. They went out and they were told how many signatures they had to gather. In order to have a initiative qualified for the ballot, a citizen-driven initiative, they got to have 10% of the total votes casted for the last gubernatorial election, which was just over 30,000. So they were responsible to collect 3,026 signatures. They came back to the office on February 22nd, and they submitted 6,422 raw signatures, meaning those signatures have not been confirmed. We haven't reviewed them. They were just raw. We, we stamp them, we count them. There's 6,422. Out of those 6,422 signatures, we touched in excess of 4,400. And out of those, 3,026, I actually asked for an extra one to make it sealed, the deal. 3,027 signatures were confirmed. Therefore, the signatures were gathered and they met the requirements per Election Code. The fiscal impact attached to this initiative, the, the citizen-driven initiative has been drafted without a sunset, meaning there's no term limit, and all funds generated from the half percent tax increase will be deposited into a new Kings County Fire and Emergency Service Fund. The revenue for the fund or the tax will only supplement and not replace any other monies provided to the fire department by the county. Okay? The Finance Department through HDL, which is a consultant, reported an estimated revenue projection of under $12 million annually. The half percent tax increase will be imposed countywide, meaning all communities and cities within the county would go from seven and a quarter to seven and three quarters, with the exception of Corcoran. Corcoran would go from eight and a quarter to eight and three quarters because they're at higher tax rate. The usage of the citizen-driven initiative tax is very specific, and it's written within the ordinance and in the title and summary of this report. The funds will be allowed to be spent in the following categories. 60% of that was spent on staffing and training. 20% for infrastructure, training facilities and fire stations. 20% on firefighter equipment, rescue tools and community technology, communication technology. With that said, it, it's, I come before you to let you know that the Firefighter Association has met all the requirements related to the citizen initiative, the process, and they filed the proper documentation. They, they filed the petition correctly. They circulated the petition. They provided the correct format for the petition, and they gathered the sufficient signatures to move this process forward. It is my recommendation that you accept and approve. If, if, if my recommendation is accepted and approved, the electors of Kings County will be afforded the opportunity to cast their vote in favor or against the Kings County Fire and Emergency Service Initiative in the June 7th, 22 primary ballot. The electors of Kings County must have a 50% plus one, meaning 50% of the votes casted plus one would adopt this tax throughout Kings County, throughout countywide. The resolution presented to you today includes the language of what is going to be posted on the ballot should this measure move forward. And that is, shall the Kings County Fire and Emergency Services half percent transaction and use tax ordinance be adopted? The tax anticipated to permanently generate an approximate $11,700,000 per year. Tax proceedings will be, be used exclusively to support the personnel, infrastructure and equipment needs of the Kings County Fire Department. My recommendation is for you to adopt the resolution that would allow the half percent citizen-driven tax initiative to be placed in June 7th, 2022 statewide direct primary election. Thank you for listening, and I'm available to answer any questions in this process.
Thank you, Mr. Villa. Questions, comments?
If there are no questions or comments, I can move forward.
And I'll second with a couple of comments. You know, I know there's a little bit of controversy uh, on this initiative between the City of Hanford and the County of Kings. County of Kings have gone out, got the signatures. And at this point, we're going to vote on this or to prove it, and it'll be put to the hands of the voters. It'll be their choice to uh, increase their own tax, not ours. So as long as the public knows that it's not something we're forcing on the community, uh, that it's up to them to make that decision, uh, I'll second that.
Mr. Verboon, just to clarify that statement, you're absolutely correct. So the, what, what I'm recommending for the board to take action on today is to, simply to adopt the resolution so I can move forward and be able to place the, the initiative on the ballot for the June 7th primary. So the electors, the voters of Kings County will have the ultimate voice. This is democracy at its best. This is when all the voters can decide whether they want a tax increase to support firefighters. And if it does pass, the, you know, it's spelled out correctly how they want the money to be spent. So it's not up to the board to adopt the tax. It's up to the board to adopt the resolution for us to move forward.
We support our firefighters, so therefore that was my second.
They, they did an outstanding job. I mean, they, they crunched it, six, over 6,000 signatures in 22 days.
I, I would just say to, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, that I just want to be clear because Supervisor Verboon mentioned Kings County. And I, and I think um, while we are here today at Kings County, that um, this is a, an initiative that has been driven by the public and not by Kings County.
Sure.
And whether there's dissension between cities or counties, again, that's, that's not our call. Um, any, any initiative that came through this process that uh, was able to achieve the signatures required, I'm going to be in support of just because the people are speaking. And, and then, you know, the, the county as a whole will speak on this issue. And uh, so just for clarification purposes, um, good luck. And uh, and uh, it'll fall out where it will.
And, and you're absolutely correct. I think the, the voters will have the opportunity, should the resolution be adopted, they, they'll be the ultimate voice of what we're going to do with this initiative. And it's up to the borders of Kings County to, to vote on it, you know? And, and the question was shared with the public, with you guys. So if it does move forward, the revenues will be put in a special account for the firefighters to support their, their mission in supporting our citizens as well.
Supervisor Valley, you have a question or comment?
Uh, comments, question, Counsel, Mr. Chair, thank you.
I wanted to add to the clarification that the vote today is not a vote for or against the ordinance of any kind. It's not in support, it's not against the ordinance, but it's simply a ministerial duty pursuant to Elections Code 9118, where when the public or a member of the public sets forth an initiative and they get the number of signatures, the board has a limited number of options available to it. Um, they can either adopt the ordinance, which is not available in this time, in this instance, because this is a ordinance involving a new tax. Um, in the alternative, they can submit the ordinance um, without any amendments to the ordinance to the voters, and that is exactly what the board's being asked to do today. I would say that it is a ministerial act and, and a duty of the board rather than um, something where um, you're voting for or against the substance of the ordinance itself.
Good, thank you for adding that.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
What we've lived through the last two weeks, it's good to let people know that, that it's not our creation.
Right. Supervisor Valley, you have.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, question, Counsel, uh, for full transparency, I, on my own time, I, I volunteered an hour uh, to go gather signatures uh, with the firefighters. So I won't put anything at risk on my vote. I want to be able to vote. I just want to double check there's not an issue with my vote.
I see no issue with your vote.
All right, thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Here, seeing none, uh, the items have been moved by Fagunda, seconded by Verboon. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. Let the record show, uh, five, five affirmative uh, votes. So thank you very much. Thank you, Lupi. You did a great job.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thanks for the point.
Good luck in the future, stay healthy.
With you.
Only thing I would add, if it passes, I want a demonstration of the CPR machine on Supervisor Valley.
On YouTube.
That might be above and beyond. Uh, the next item comes from administration where there's five items dealing with uh, 1, 2, 2, 2 West Lacy Boulevard. Kiriya, would you like to begin the discussion?
Good morning, Board Members. Kiriya Martinez, Assistant CAO. Last Tuesday, your board approved a ground lease purchase agreement and post-construction agreement with Lacy Campus Partners for the real property located at 1222 West Lacy Boulevard here in Hanford, also known as the Old Hospital. The Board's discretionary act is that the count, that the project is a county project. A request to declare the project exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act was required for approval, but was not included in the action item. With today's recommendation, the county will by resolution rescind the prior agreements with Lacy Campus Partners and determine the project is exempt from CEQA review in accordance with CEQA guidelines. The county will additionally reapprove such agreements with the required CEQA findings, and then the agreements will be effective when reapproved. I'm available for questions. We also have counsel from Lozano Smith, and we have our developers on WebEx and in person. At this time, we request your board to adopt a resolution rescinding prior actions, making a determination of categorically exempt from the CEQA and authorizing the filing of notice of exemption. Approve the ground lease agreements with Lacy Campus Partners LP for the premises located at 1222 West Lacy Boulevard in Hanford for initial 25-year term with a three, five-year option for renewal. Approve the purchase agreement with Lacy Campus Partners LP for the real property located at 1222 West Lacy Boulevard in Hanford. Approve the post-construction lease agreement with Lacy Campus Partners LP for the real property located at 1222 West Lacy Boulevard in Hanford and authorize the county administrative officer or is designated to sign the intended rents commencement letter. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Uh, questions or comments? Supervisor. Supervisor Valley?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you for the information. The question is, is it determination to say that this project does not require or that a CEQA review is not necessary? Is that solely the board's discretion, or was there a higher agency that tells you that you can tell the board there's no need for this environmental inspection?
I will defer to counsel to address.
Yes, the analysis was done by the Kings County Community Development Agency. There are a number of conditions that would render a project exempt from CEQA. They did determine that this project was exempt from CEQA, and administration is relying on the community development agency's determination.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Kenny. Thank you for being here. Would you like to address this issue?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Chuck Kenny, Community Development Agency Director. Yes, the CEQA does allow for exemptions, one of which is for existing facilities. Since this is an existing facility, it's being rehabilitated, it fits within that definition well, and so the recommendation is for your board to approve it as a categorically exempt from CEQA.
All right, thank you. I only ask the Mr. Chair because usually you see the headlines for these type of projects. Well, now, I wouldn't say these type of projects, I'm saying brand-new projects, stadiums, for example, basketball arenas that get built without these type of expenses. Usually draw headlines, someone, I just wanted to double check on that, so appreciate it.
The key word here, we're repurposing the building. Not building it, that's the buzzword nowadays, repurpose. Take the best of it.
Good, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Any points of clarification?
Make the motion to approve as presented.
Second. Moved by Verboon, seconded by Fagundes. Additional discussion or clarification? Here are seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. Let the record show, that item stands approved, I'm in favor, good luck. Thank you. So that means I got to sign all that stuff again?
Yes.
Ah. Yeah. All right, we'll we'll go get through it. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda comes from the Health Department and receive an update on the COVID-19 Rosemary, thank you for being here, thank you for staying with us all day.
Thank you. Shorter meeting today. Good morning, Chairman, Board. Rosemary Rand, Department of Public Health. We continue to see a steady decrease in COVID cases in this past week from February 28 to March 6. We had a total of 170 community cases, and we're now seeing an average of 37 cases a day. And as a reminder, it doesn't include home tests, but that's a significant drop from what we had been seeing in this last surge. We have seen a slight increase in the percentage of cases that are among the 65 and older population, with a continued decrease in the 0 to 11 and 12 to 15 cases. As noted last week, we are shifting focus and prioritizing on the highest-risk populations for investigations, which include congregate settings, skilled nursing facilities, businesses and schools in an outbreak management pattern. Omnicron is still currently the dominant variant in Kings County, making up 97% of the specimens that were sequenced in the month of February, and at this time, no other variants of concern were noted. For the hospital, as of March 7, the local hospital had 13 patients in med surg and two in ICU, and those who were admitted, eight were Kings County residents. Our local hospital continues to see a decrease in hospitalizations, which is good to see as we continue on the downward trend. Unvaccinated patients continue to make up the majority of the hospitalized patients, which remain at 80% since the start of the surge. As far as testing, within the last week, March 1 through the 7, public health collected 755 COVID tests, which was a significant decrease from the week prior. Home kits continue to be distributed to everyone who receives a PCR test at the Hanford site and in our mobile testing units and in our Corcoran clinics on Sunday. We've distributed over 22,000 at-home test kits, and it's actually up to 44,000. So the additional 10,000, 12,000 kits we ordered are being delivered to community partners last week and this week. Kings County Commission and Aging will receive 1,080 kits. The Family Resource Centers in Corcoran, Hanford, Lemoore, Kettleman City will receive 200 kits. Foster Care will get 722 kits, and the KCAO Food Distribution will get 10,000 kits that will be handed out during food distribution events. Turnaround time is still 24 hours for results, and we know it can change as there is increasing demand, but currently there is not a demand. In the last week, February 28 through March 6, public health administered 212 vaccines, which is a significant drop from the last week. As of today, we have 9,016 partially vaccinated residents and 67,734 fully vaccinated residents, which remains at 51% of the population. Our current breakthrough rate still stands at 9%. 39% of our fully vaccinated population in Kings County is boosted. As reported last week, we will be moving from a modified vaccine and testing schedule in order to effectively utilize our personnel in light of the reduction in numbers at the clinics, so we can maximize attendance at clinics. We'll still be available for mobile pop-up sites upon request, and we'll continue to do the already scheduled events, and there's several community partners who are also planning events. Also, as a reminder, this is about face coverings. Effective March 12, the universal masking requirements for the K through 12 and childcare settings will move to a strong recommendation, so each district is working on that. Face coverings and masks will still be required in hospitals, clinics and congregate settings such as skilled nursing facilities. The department is striving to be flexible during this current calm and remain responsive to the needs of our residents. We continue to recommend that our communities stay safe and protected, and we want to remain diligent and cautious during this time as we know how quickly things can change. We have the tools in our community through these surges, and we continue to stress the importance of testing, staying home when you're sick, wearing a face covering and being vaccinated and boosted when you're eligible. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good, thank you. Questions or comments? Supervisor Valley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, thank you for the information. You mentioned KCAO is going to receive 10,000 home test kits. So can you can you find out for me that are those just going to get placed in the food box, meaning there's not going to be any eligibility, are people going to get asked questions or any kinds of?
I was under the understanding they would be handed out in the food box with the instructions.
Yeah, because I don't see any other reason.
I can verify again, but that was my understanding.
No, please, Deeks, I don't see any other reason or any other way they would be putting that out besides you and your staff unless they're just simply placing it in the food box. Thank you. And then, as long as you're on the agenda and going to give this report to the board and the public, you think you could keep a lookout, as like you said, as far as moving ahead through this pandemic and just some of the concerns that that people have who were infected by COVID, went through it, whether it's five days, 10 days, or whatever period that they were sick from, but you know, there is some folks, some things out there publicly that suggests there's no such thing as a recovery from COVID, right? We don't know, you know, what if once this virus was in our bodies, what it might be doing to us internally, or how it could affect our bodies a year from now or two years from now. So if can you add that, if you see any kind of data or research, just studies based on people?
Long-term COVID.
Long-term?
Yeah, there's actually quite a bit, so I can gather some information on that.
Thank you. I think that'd be helpful.
Great. Good to know. And if there's anything else you want to add or adjust, now that we're seeing a downward trend.
Probably a report on seasonal flu, because I think we're aware of an individual that got caught up with the seasonal flu and it. Exactly, you know, so while COVID-19 seems to be winding down, there are still viruses in the environment, there are still sicknesses that are still contagious, and you still need to be able to wash your hands, keep plenty of water on hand and hydrated and a healthy body, and if you're sick, stay home.
I was wondering where that individual was, I thought he was on vacation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
After Saturday night, or what? That was a different flu.
Hit me all the time.
Yeah. Yeah, but yeah, and so if you need any testimony as to how the seasonal flu affects you, it is still alive and well in the community, and we need to keep everybody as healthy and safe as they can. And so to continue to use not just face coverings, but hygiene and healthy and hydrated and all of the other safety precautions you need.
Sanitizer.
With that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Hill, would you like to talk about county staff impacts due to COVID?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since our last report and since the outbreak began, our cases have went from 342 to 344, so only two cases last week, which is a great number, commensurate with Ms. Ren's report. So welcoming news.
Very good. Anybody on quarantine, anybody?
I'm sorry, I don't have that number this morning, I can report that later.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll kind of keep track of kind of the quarantine trends as well as some of the other items. I think it's kind of important to see who's available and around. That concludes all of the action on this morning's agenda. We will now move to board member announcements or reports on their own initiative. And Supervisor Fagundes, it's a pleasure to see you, but you are, you seem very close to me now, and I'm kind of getting used to that.
They took the blurry.
The screen out, but I still look kind of hairy?
I didn't know it was you.
Oh, okay. You got a haircut, dude. I got all, I got them all cut on top.
Good shape.
Anything you want to talk about?
No, I'm good.
You're good? Thank you. Supervisor Valley?
I'm good to go, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
I'm good to go as well, thank you.
Man.
I was gonna say screw the pooch, but I mean, I'll mess that up, all right. So and very quickly, the state association and counties had their quarterly board meeting last Thursday, attended kind of the main topics of discussion there. Obviously, there were many, but the key ones that CSAC considered taking a position on was, and I just exited out, but it's a taxpayer initiative that would require California go back to a two-thirds vote, I got it here, it's called the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. Through the discussion, there were a number of issues within this that would affect local jurisdictions' ability to look at taxation issues and possibly restrict. And while there was, you know, a good discussion on, you know, how much we do pay in California, unfortunately, the this came to us with an oppose from the exec committee and the full committee took a position to oppose that issue. And then on Wednesday, I believe, the governor announced his care courts initiative, took the opportunity to take a swing at counties with this. He was on the, when he announced this, he was had a number of mayors by his side and tried to, I guess, put the blame on homelessness and these types of things on counties, but, you know, I think as we all know, funding has been a challenge, Dr. Lewis, you know, and then the one of the good things that came out of this, though, was, you know, obviously conserving folks when they do have these times, these types of issues are very challenging, and I think it's a step to possibly helping those people that can't can't make those decisions accurately on their own. You know, California law prohibits us or anyone else from taking people's rights, and I think this is a step in the direction of, you know, attacking those that are in the worst scenario where they can't make those decisions for themselves. So that, along with some funding, and we'll see how that trickles down to us. But with that, it's my comments.
Good, thank you. For me, last Tuesday, the 2022 Lemoore High School softball season kicked off, and so we got that started, and it's underway. West Hills College hosted a play-in game for round one of the state championships, defeating Siskiess. They went ahead and played in round two at the San Joaquin Delta College up in the Stockton area, and they ended up winning 17 games this season. The college will be hosting the state championships starting on Thursday through Sunday in Lemoore. CalViva Public Policy had an in-person meeting first time in a couple of years. The enhanced care and community support model of care was rolled out in January in Kings County. It will be rolled out in Fresno and Madera later on in the year. This is a Medi-Cal Managed Care benefit with wraparound services for members and is continues to gain some traction. We also reviewed the provider network for CalViva, which includes 10 hospitals, 143 clinics, 360 primary care physicians, 159 pharmacies, over 1,100 behavioral health providers all in the region, and the plan also covers approximately 1,400 specialists, 23 vision providers, along with two acupuncturists. I guess that's a word, acupuncturist, or I don't know, I'm not sure what that, yeah. Anyway, they're all in the system for care. We did review the audits and the appeals and grievances, and the operation continues to operate. Did attend for, unfortunately, kind of an abbreviated time, the Highway 99 meeting at the Tulare Agri Center in Tulare last week. The goal is to improve State Highway 99, even though Kings County doesn't really have an off-ramp or any direct connection to Highway 99. A lot of people use that as a main artery to go up and up and down the valley, and it's important to support that that mode of transportation. The South Fork Kings GSA Policy Committee met on Friday. We hope to return to in-person meetings on St. Patrick's Day, March 17. We are going to have a hybrid model, which will also allow the public to participate in some of the meetings, and there was discussion about creating a grower committee, and so that will be taken up at a time in the future. Little League opening ceremonies took place both in Hanford and Lemoore. Great day to lead off the 2022 season. Lot of, lot of players, lot of teams, lot of enthusiasm, and we look forward to all of those activities in the next few months. Had a meeting with IHSS workers yesterday talking about, you know, that one, another unique thing about IHSS is about 95% of their clientele turning their pay cards virtually, and so the COVID-19 has really increased technology in that field, and so those individuals continue to, you know, make great strides in not only serving their clients, but also being part of the community and meeting all of the, a lot of the technology issues that all of us have kind of had challenges with the last couple of years. And yesterday, also yesterday, the Emergency Food and Shelter Program had a meeting to score and allocate plans for the Phase 39 and the ARPA money. Even with the additional funding bringing the total up to a little over $320,000, the needs were still farther greater than the funding. Some requests were funded at 60%, lower scoring proposals didn't get any funding at all. So all of the requests for services across the board have increased, and unfortunately, the volunteer staffing continues to decrease, and it's not just in the fire department where volunteers' numbers have fallen. The pandemic has created an environment where volunteering is just not fun anymore with all of the other requirements. So all of the programs continue to adjust to available staffing, and many are returning to in-person meetings, but because of the reduced staffing, they've really had to get very efficient in the way they operate. And I think all of them are still continuing to serve the public very well. Soup Kitchen, Commission on Aging, and all of the other organizations that continue to to serve many of the people throughout Kings County. So with that, thank you very much for that. Mr. Hill, do you want to talk about board correspondence, upcoming events, and information on future agenda items?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For board correspondence, your board received a letter from Elections Department regarding certificate of petition. Your board also received the Dudley Ridge Water District estimate to discharge obligations and 2022 calendar year budget. Also received the South Fork Kings Notice of Proposed Amendment to the Groundwater Sustainability Plan, subject to Water Code Section 10728.4. Those are included in your correspondence. For upcoming events, every Tuesday in March, there's the lunchtime food truck takeover from 11 to 2 at Court Street and Civic Park. from 11 to 2 at Court Street in Civic Park. The Children's Storybook Garden Museum will be hosting a St. Patrick's Day tea on March 12th. The Children's Storybook Garden and Museum is also still hosting the Kings Night Out on Saturday, March 12th and Friday, April 22nd from 5:30 to 8, located at 175 East 10th Street in Hanford. The cost is $25 per child for members and $28 per child for non-members. The Kings County Farm Bureau Wine and Beer Showdown fundraiser is scheduled for March 31st from 5:30 to 8:30 at the Haddonford Civic Auditorium. Your board received an invitation from Recurrent Energy for a ribbon-cutting ceremony at the state project, or excuse me, the Slate Project on March 15th with a lunch at 12:30 and program starting at 1:00. Your board also received an invitation for the Golden Eagle Pantry. Will be having a ribbon-cutting ceremony on March 16th from noon until 1:00 at West Hills College Student Union located at 555 College Avenue in Building 900 in Lamoore. For upcoming agenda items, administration has two items. SB 823 Youth Programs and Facilities Grant Program Standard Agreement and the 2022 Dry Year Water Transfer Program. County Council has appointment of trustees to the Kings Mosquito Abatement District. The District Attorney's Office has three resolutions for consideration necessary for grant-funded programs. The library has two resolutions for consideration, both for the authorization of the application and receipt of grant funds for the library infrastructure grant for both the Hanford and Lamoore branches. Health has five items, the COVID-19 update, consideration for the CMSP grant extension, consideration for the purchase of equipment and reconfiguration of the Hanford WIC office, the consideration for the tuberculosis program real-time allotment funding, consideration for personnel services agreement with Acela Incorporated, and SEP Technology for consulting for software modernization migration services. HSA has consideration of amendment with KCO for home visitation program. JTO has consideration for a resolution approving the submission of a zone incentive application. The Sheriff's Office has consideration for the use of staff time and resources to assist at the California State Sheriff's Association Conference, and Veterans Service Office has consideration for a resolution proclaiming the week of March 20th through 26th as Veterans and Military Women's History Week in Kings County. We also plan on bringing a, hopefully an updated schedule for the remodel of the board chambers next week to give your board an update, because that will modify our processes after we lock those dates down. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good, thank you, Mr. Hill. I also want to add a reception tomorrow evening at West Hills College for President James Preston. He became the, the next president of West Hills College Lamoore after Dr. Clark got promoted to chancellor, and so there will be a reception in his honor tomorrow, 4 to 6. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none. We do have one item under closed session, and so the board will move into that item after adjourning today. The next regular scheduled meeting is Tuesday, March 15th at 9:00 AM. I do want to bring your attention to 11 o'clock meeting of the California Public Finance Authority Regular Meeting and the California Community Housing Agency Regular Meeting to take place at 11 o'clock. So with that, that concludes all of the actions of today. Want to thank you for being here. Stay safe, stay healthy, and we'll see you next time. Thank you very much. That, we will now move into closed session.